Don't think my audio is connected. Is anybody hearing me?
All right, what's going on? You're muted?
No, I'm not muted. It's just that it's not connecting the audio.
Plug the speakers in again. I plugged them in too fast. Put your volume up.
Yes, sir. But it shouldn't be the sharing.
No, we should hear them talking right now.
If they are talking.
Yeah, leave me and then go back in. Always a fail-safe.
It's like rebooting everything.
It shouldn't be a big deal. Watch me.
Let me in, James.
Let's test the computer audio. Still not here. All right. And if you can't do it that way, then I guess that we will. Get your sound through the phone. You could. Well, it's not the best way to. No, it's not. You have that delay. I don't know. It's like you have no sound coming out of the computer.
But I won't have delay.
Maybe not. John with computer audio. There we are.
There we go.
That took a while.
Had to get the cobwebs out of my computer system here. All right, we are. We are live, I believe, so we will call the special meeting of January 11th, 2021 to to order. If everyone would please rise where you are for the pledge of allegiance. We will get moving. Let's see. There we go. I pledge allegiance. There we go. If we could have a roll call, please.
Councilperson Brady. President on the phone. You pray? Your Higgins is not here. Ross here. Dulcito. Tobin here. Mayor Carnes.
Here. All right. Purposes. Purpose of this meeting is that we have a special meeting for the purposes of to present a 10-year road improvement program to be held this very evening. So we have a presentation that is going to be put on. I'm booked for so we have Hennessy Engineers here. Jim, I guess I'll start with you if you want to lead things off for us.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
I'm John Hennessy, who lives in the public domain of Dover. And then I'm joined by Jim Hollsworth. And also Tiffany Newberg is with us as well. It's running the program. Can everyone hear me well?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, wonderful. Well, what we have for you this evening is a a 10-year capital improvement program for our roadway network. And we've done this to facilitate essentially a plan for us to follow over the next 10 years to look at different types of remediation of our roadway system depending on the level of deterioration within the roadways through there and try to outline really ways that we can reach the entire community in each year with a variety of different project types through there. Obviously, our number one goal is to maximize our community investment within the roadway program through there. Like all capital improvement programs that are 10-year programs, this is really meant to be a living document, meaning that it should be revisited every year for the next two to three years to make sure that it's in line with our current budgets that we have in place, budget projections that are made tonight, and with the goals of the community through there. So it's meant to be a living program through there. And the basis of the capital improvement program itself is the PAGER study that we've done recently this fall, which is a pavement service and evaluation rating. It is an MDOT required rating system that rates the roads from 10 to 1, 10 being the best and 1 being complete deterioration, structural failure of the roadway through there. We've looked at four types of roadway rehabilitation. Why did we go to the first slide, Tiffany? Wait, the inter. Tiffany, can you back up? The first slide. Looking at go back one. Right there. Yeah, thank you. So there are four types of roadway rehabilitation program projects that we're looking to do. That's remove and reconstruct roads. So that's roads that are completely deteriorated, have structural failure. Then we have asphalt milling, resurfacing. That's where we mill the roads off. We try to repair the base where need be. And then we resurface it. So those are roads that are kind of nearing the end of their midlife cycle. Removal and reconstruct. Those are roads that have exceeded their life cycle in essence through there. And then we have concrete sectioning. That's where we cut portions of roads that are failing. And those are really meant for roads that are in midlife. And then lastly, we have joint sealing. And joint sealing is really just to preserve the investment that we've made, roads that are good through there, and try to maintain that a nice reliability that's within the roads that we've put in there. And our second goal is obviously is to marry our roadway capital improvement program with the replacement of our lead service lines as necessary. So in doing this exercise, we've identified roads that have a high number of lead service leads that need to be addressed, and we will address those with the roadway. Next, I'd like to talk about the funding sources for the capital improvement program that you have here. With the roadway, there's really three types of funding sources. There's the road bond, Act 51, and FAC. FAC stands for Federal Aid Committee. I'm going to go through each one and kind of explain those in a little greater detail from the council and the public. The road bond, the community has approved a $20 million roadway infrastructure bonding. That has looked to be bonded in three series, 6.7 million, 6.7 million, and lastly, 6.6 million. The first series has been let, and that's 6.7 million. And we're looking to utilize the balance of that bond that we have, approximately 2.5 to 3 million to for this, for our immediate needs for '22, '23. And then we're going to issue another series of bonds. And then lastly, we issuing the last series of bonds at 6.6 millions. But they average approximately 1.5 million per year can be put forth into the roadway program through there. Act 51 money, and that's, this is the gasoline tax. It's a public act that was started in 1951. And it is really how roadway rehabilitation is thought to be paid more miles you drive, the more gasoline you consume, and the more you pay in taxes. A problem that has really communities have struggled with, and Lincoln Park is not isolated in this, is that from 1984 to 2016, there was no change in the gasoline tax. It was 18.7 cents per gallon. So obviously, our revenues were somewhat locked from 1984 to 2016. Our expenditures increased, so obviously, the amount of roadwork that can be done lessened, and this is what's caused an acceleration of the deterioration of roadways throughout the entire state, to be candid. In 2017, the gasoline tax rose to 26 cents a gallon, which is nice to see. Just to let you know, neighboring Ohio has 28 cents a gallon for its local tax, its state tax. And finally, 2022, the tax will be indexed to the CPI inflation. So that tax will increase as inflation increases. But for Act 51, we're averaging, we're starting out with about 1.25 every million per year that we're putting in there, and then we've added in an increase of 3% per year, which averages about 1.5 million per year. Our construction costs are indexed as well at 3%, so they, we have a sliding gradation for the increase of our construction costs at 3%, which matches that. Then lastly, is the FAC, Federal Aid Committee. Federal Aid Committee is what it's referred to. And this is the federal gasoline tax that comes through the federal government. And in the state of Michigan, there's about, I think about 18 cents or something, like about 10 cents of federal tax dollar, of our gasoline tax goes to federal dollars. They come back to us. And the way that works, so the federal government distributes it to the state of Michigan. The state of Michigan keeps 75% and then distributes 25% to the counties. Wayne County receives approximately about 16 million a year in this money. We, Wayne County splits it with local communities and themselves. They keep 50% to handle the roadways that they own. And then they distribute about 50%, which is about $8 million. So we're buying against 43 communities every year for about $8 million. We have been successful, though. And Emmons was paid for through Federal Aid Committee money. And then we have River Drive is slated for this next year. The contract was, is being awarded at this point through MDOT. The advantage to Federal Aid Committee money is that and it's an 18.15% match through there. We do have a couple of potential streets in '24, '25 that will show you that we will pursue Federal Aid Committee funding through that. There's no guarantee, as I said, that we're competing against other communities. As I mentioned, this program is mirrored in with the water main work, and we've got some funding sources for that. We're looking at an average of about 2.7 million per year of funding sources. And this is really predicated off of the capital improvement, the water capital improvement program that Mr. Kazim presented in the fall, which outlined approximately $4 million in potential leads through there. Through this capital improvement program that we've outlined here, we are going to achieve the replacement of an average of 124.5 lead service lines per year. We need to achieve 206 is our goal over the 20-year period. So that will leave approximately 81.5 leads per year on an average that still need to be addressed. The water main, there's a little bit more grants available with this than roadways because the only real funding that really is present is the Federal Aid Committee. And we've outlined three grants. We've applied for a million-dollar grant already that looks up to for up to $3 million to for disadvantaged communities that help us inventory our lead lines so that we can be 100% sure of where we're at. And also to help update our water asset management plan. And it's somewhat similar to the SOLA grant that we've just gone through through there. Then also, we're applying for drinking water infrastructure grants. It's, and those grants, we're presenting that at the end of the month. And it will pay for up to 30% of project costs, up to $2 million. So that is some of the grants that we're applying for in the water main system through there. So based on that, this kind of provides the history of what the goals of the program are and the funding mechanisms and the average numbers that we're looking. And now we'd like to go through all of our calendar years from '21 to '30 to kind of show you some of the projects that we're looking to entail. So the very first thing I want to put everyone to is the legend. And you can see the green is where we're looking to remove and reconstruct, and there'll be water main replacements with that. The light blue is is the resurfacing. So those are the projects here there. And then the red dash line is where we'll do street sectioning. And then in the yellow area through there, it's going to be joint sealing areas through there. And then the purple is concrete sectioning areas. For '21 and '22, we have identified exactly what roads we're looking to do the sectioning on. In '23, though, we just shade areas because we really can't project. We need to go out there the year before we identify the street sectioning areas to be done through there. And so in '21, we're looking to remove and replace four sections of really Montey and Pagel through there. And we're looking to resurface a number of streets, mill and resurface seven streets through there. Concrete section three streets, and then through the joint sealing in, as you can see, the northeast, the southwest quadrant through there. The construction costs, you can see, we've got a total of about $2.8 million of construction costs. The water mains, we're replacing approximately 1.75 miles of water main at approx. And then we're addressing a number of lead service leads, over 100 lead service leads. So we're looking at a water cost of about $2.2 million. And again, that was out of the $4 million that was presented originally. These numbers may come down if we're successful in our grant applications, but we're presenting that tonight. So our total program cost is about $5.1 million for 2021. Now, if we go on to 2022, we've got the same legend that's through there. You can see, though, we're taking a little bit different approach. We're looking to do a little bit larger sections of the reconstruction. And we've got about half a mile of reconstruction through there. And we're looking at LeBlanc for that. And Mill and Phil, we're doing Mill and asphalt replacement. We're looking to do two larger sections, two streets through there. And then the joint sealing, we've got about seven roads in the southwest portion of the community that will be joint sectioning. Again, the numbers are very similar to what we had before. We're averaging about 1.8 miles of water main reconstruction at about $2 million. Road costs are about $2.8 million with the funding at $5.1 million through there. That's '22. '23 is a little bit, a little bit different in that we're looking to do a reconstruction of LeBlanc. And you can see our road costs are a little bit higher than they were. I mean, we're doing a little bit more. We're doing a little over 1.8 miles of water main reconstruction. And we're addressing close to 200 lead service leads through there. And so that's increases that water main cost a little bit for that particular year. It puts us at 3 million. What you can see in this area here, we identified the concrete sectioning area as the northwest quadrant of the city. As I mentioned before, we really don't have the streets yet because that's approximately three years off from when we started this. So we'll revisit this, and we'll update this plan as we go every year for the mayor and administration and council through there. But this program year is a little bit larger. It's at about 5.9 million, almost $6 million for that particular contract year. And when we get into '24, very, very similar to that, we're looking to do two roads through reconstruction through there and two roads for resurfacing. I would like to point out that Champagne, we would be eligible for application of Champagne. There would be a resurfacing project through there. And that's looking at Champagne from Dix to Fort Park through there. And that brings our subtotal up to approximately $2.9 million for that. And again, we're averaging about 1.8 million or 1.8 miles of road projects through there. We're at about $5 million for that particular project year as well through there. And then '25 is similar still. We're looking to do two roads for the reconstructions through there. We are looking to do two roads for milling, resurfacing. We are eligible for Harrison from Fort River Drive for the Federal Aid Committee. It has just a slight little variation in the color through there, if you see that. And then we are looking to do the concrete section would be in the southeast quadrant of the community. And then joint sealing would be throughout the northeast and the southwest. Our project numbers are again very similar, 2.9 million for the roadway work, 1.8 mile, or excuse me, 2 million for the water main. Bringing us up for a total program cost of about $5 million a year through there. And then for '26, we'll follow, obviously, very similar. It's about a little bit more of a program year. We're at about $3 million for roadway construction, or excuse me, for the resurfacing. We've got the reconstructions. As they're showing in the green through there, we've got a total road program of $3 million through there. And then obviously, we're doing about 1.4 million, the 1.4 miles of roadwork through there. We've got about 2.6 million. So our program is about $5.6 million through there for '26. '27 shows is similar, diversifying a little bit where we're doing the reconstructions. We've got one in the northeast quadrant, excuse me, northwest quadrant, and then the southeast quadrant. We've got five streets that we're doing mill and resurfacing upon, bringing us our program cost of $3 million. The water main, again, we're doing over approximately 230 service leads through here at 1.8 miles of road service. That's bringing us to a total of 3.6 million sort of program cost of $6.6 million through there. The one thing I would like to add is that although the numbers kind of change between $5 to $6 million per program year, it's looked to be funded, the ones that are a little bit higher will be funded from the issuance of the bond. And then we'll pay back, then we'll grab a little bit more from Act 51 as the later years happen. So that's how that's and as the numbers I gave you at the front end of the presentation are really the averages that are maintained throughout the 10-year program. And then 2028, we have through there, we have three streets that are being reconstructed through there. And we'll have a total of $3 million in roadwork through there. We've got, as you can see, some larger sections to be milled and resurfaced through there. And we've got the water mains where we're doing approximately 80. This particular year, we're doing only 88 service leads that are present within the roadways through there. So obviously, this year, we've got, we had close to 200 one year. This year, we're a little bit less, 88 through there. We've got 1.7 miles of roadwork through there. We've got a total program cost of $5.7 million through there. And '29 is a little bit different. We've got, we looked at smaller reconstructs. And so we've got a total of five streets that we're looking to remove and reconstruct. We've got a couple of streets in that same area to resurface through there. The concrete sections, obviously, again, in the southwest quadrant. And the joint sealing is in the, excuse me, northwest. In the joint sealing and the concrete sectioning in these later years to address those areas. That's not to mention that if we have to get out of these areas because we have a particular need or emergency, that we're not going to do that. But that's why that's identified in those areas. And then lastly, running on to '23 year through there, we have a total, we've got two streets that we're looking to to do joint sealing through there. And we might be able to do some FAC money for Abbott potentially apply for that particular project. But we're looking at Pagel for that. And we've got a total program, roadway program of 3.1 million. And then the water funds at 2.7 million. And that's at $5.8 million is the total program dollars that we have through there. So as you can see, this is a kind of a comprehensive look at building a roadmap for us, not unintended, of how you put our, allocate our resources so that we get the greatest bang for our buck and really hope that we can get good pricing with the future, if we can put some of these programs together. There is talk about at federal level, we're hearing, you know, an infrastructure bill potentially. This doesn't take into consideration any of those potential aspects which hopefully would be available to us. But over the 10-year program, we are looking to, it's looking to invest about 29 million in the roadway from those three funding sources, about 26 million from the water fund sources. And it's addressing a total of about 15 miles of roadway and about 17 miles of water main reconstruction and rehabilitation through there. And I know it's a lot to digest, and we're here to answer, Jim, myself, and Tiffany, any questions the council may have.
John, you're looking at, you mentioned the grant funding that may become available later on. The amount of money that we're still putting into it will be increased by the, by the grant's amount, correct?
That is correct. That's correct. This is, this is no grants.
If we get, if we get a $1 million grant, that just means that's $1 million of additional money that will be going into the roads that, that year, that program.
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay. The second thing, just as we go through this, if your presentation, if we could get something of a, that we could display in City Hall for people when they do come back into the building, so that we could have something for them, that we could show them, possibly even in the council chambers for what we propose to do in the next 10 years.
We can certainly put boards up and kind of identify that in program years so we can maybe group them in years of three so the maps are not, it kind of looks overwhelming if you put it all on one particular map.
Well, I mean, like 10 separate ones is what I was looking for.
Well, we can do that, yeah.
Yeah, so that we could then walk people through this as, as we get, you know, a year into the process or two years in the process.
Certainly, yes.
These roads that were chosen that for, for the work, you're talking about the Pizer thing where you went, went through and it was all, you work where you can get the best bang for your buck, I guess, and then coupled with the water line, things that we, that were required to do. But it's, who made the final determination on which roads were to be done?
We looked at the research funding, as you mentioned, and then we tied it to the water service leads that we are, that are known at this point with Mr. Kazoo. It's through Mr. Kazoo's office and our office that presented this, that made the determination of the roadways through there.
And it had to, I mean, we're under the gun as far as the water service lines go, correct? We have to, a certain.
That's right. We have to achieve 206 over a 20-year period. And through this program, we're adjusting 124 programs. So if we were to get additional funding, potentially, Mayor, we would maybe look at roads that didn't have as many water service leads, but were still in need of some type of form of rehabilitation and try to allocate those resources in those directions.
John, and going through, and James, you can pipe in on this too. I think we're putting every available dollar that we have. I mean, we're throwing some into the fund balance, but everything else that's available, we're putting, putting into the roads. Is that fair to say?
That's, yeah, absolutely. And when you hit on it earlier, this is, you know, this plan is being presented with what I would consider fairly static funding right now. This is utilizing basically a snapshot of our funding now and how we can reasonably assume it's going to be over the next 10 years. This takes nothing into account any additional funding.
Okay, with the, so with the amount of money that we get from the state coming in the form of, from the, from the gas tax, I don't think that that has a possibility of being, being reduced, correct? If they run into budgetary constraints due to COVID next year?
Well, it would, it would typically only be reduced if people weren't driving. So if there's a lack of collection, just to us.
So it's because of everybody being shut down for a period of time and people weren't driving from, to work, they were working remotely and such, that could have an impact for a little bit of the cash as we move forward?
It potentially could. We didn't realize that large of an effect during the major shutdown that happened during spring.
Okay, I'm just, just throwing that, throwing that out there. Those were my concerns. Open it up to the floor from council.
Through the chair, Your Honor?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
I know that I've asked this before, but I don't remember, so I'm going to ask again, if you could just remind me, please, what the lifespan is of a, of a concrete road and then the lifespan of an asphalt road?
Yeah, typically, the lifespan of a concrete road should be at least 30 years. That's what it's, and then, but I will preface that, that there has to be intermediate maintenance done during that 30 years. And joint sealing is where we go through and you remove the tar from the roads and then you reapply the tar to prevent the water from coming into the roads through there. And the life cycle of an asphalt road is generally in the range of 15 to 20 years. So there's, there's a bit of a difference of a 10 to 15-year gap between the two. And again, the asphalt road will need intermediate maintenance as well. You can get some cracking through the road, like an asphalt road, and then that should be sealed, but it doesn't really impact the reliability of the road and the road still maintains its structural integrity. I will tell you, Councilman, that the roads that we build today are on a, have an aggregate base, which means that they're on stone. And when water gets in there, the stone, the water comes away through the stone to the stormwater system. And the older roads didn't have that. The concrete is a little bit, but that's, that's the life cycle of both of those.
Thank you. And then if you could please explain to me what soft costs are? Because I seen that cost on not, not only the road construction, but also on the, on the water part of it.
Yeah, that's all, kind of all non-construction costs. So that's engineering, legal, bonding, and all of those types of costs through there. And we generalize that at 10% because some of the projects require, like removal and reconstruct requires a lot of in-depth engineering. Average is out. And then obviously, with the bond issuance, we have bond council, we have the financial consultant that, that sells the bond on the market for us. And there's, those costs are all wrapped up into that.
Thank you. And one more question. I had the same concern that Mayor voiced about the Act 59 money. So what time of year do we normally see that?
That actually comes through monthly.
Oh, it does?
Yeah, it comes through. And I think what the state of Michigan did, is as James mentioned, when there was a shortfall from the COVID, I think they took some of the money from the CARES Act and gave it to the communities so there wouldn't be much of a difference. So it was a real concern that we were really going to see a dip from the lack of gasoline consumption through there. And so the numbers that we're seeing are averaging. And going forward in '22, the fact that it's indexed to the CPI is a very good thing for us. It's a good thing for all the communities that, that we should be able to count on it as a relatively solid baseline.
Thank you.
Anything further from, from council?
Through the chair, Your Honor.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
This is Councilwoman Salcedo. Just a quick question. Under the road fund subtotal for the year '23, '24, and '25, it's all identical where it says water main reconstruct, .50 miles, lead services reconstruct, 42 each, water main resurface, 1.33 miles, lead service resurfacing, 159 each. In '23, '24, and '25, all those statistics are the same, yet the prices to the right are different. The only thing that struck me, for instance, lead service reconstruct, 42 each, $230,000 in '23. And in '24, it's only $90,000. And then back in '25, it's $200,000. So can someone just explain that briefly to me? What am I missing?
I believe we, these are based off of a technical memorandum that we put together, we shared, and we presented in more viewer friendly than all these detailed spreadsheets in a sense. And I think we got copy error issue, although the numbers are right, the dollar amounts are right, but the portions maybe have to be revisited, Councilman.
All right, so you see where I'm coming at it, right?
No, I do. I, as I was going through that, I noticed that myself. But we didn't want to present this technical spreadsheet because it gets a little bit in the weeds, if you know what I mean. And you can, we wanted to present it in more graphical. So we'll, we'll address that and then reissue it with a new issuing date, Councilman, so that we go through that, so that the numbers are.
Thank you very much. And like the mayor said, if this could be explained in City Hall somewhere, that'd be great.
Yeah, we can certainly do that.
Anything, anything further for Hennessy's on their report? Okay, now, hearing none, then thank you all for, for that. I would ask, John, Jim, if you would hang through the meeting for the rest of it and when we open it up for citizen communication a little bit later on, in case there's a question there? All right. Then we have something for us to, to take action, I guess, or for, for discussion. It has a cover letter from John Kazoo, our DPS director. And in background, it's Audio Concrete Construction of Milford, Michigan, was the first of Lincoln Park's concrete section contractor for the work of 2019 and 2000 construction seasons, was the contractor. They have offered to extend their contract unit rates from 2019 contract to the 2021 construction season. JV Cement Contracting Company of Brownstown, Michigan, was a City of Lincoln Park cement contractor for the road reconstruction program for the 2019 and 2020 construction seasons. They have offered to extend their contract unit rates from 2019 contract year to the 2021 concrete construction season. Hutch Paving Incorporated of Warren, Michigan, was the City of Lincoln Park's paving contractor for the asphalt resurfacing program, Phase 2 work for the 2019 and 2020 asphalt seasons. They have offered to extend their contract and unit rates from the 2019 concrete to the year to the 2021 season. So the resolution that goes with this is that be it resolved that the mayor and city council hereby approve to extend the President Low Reed 2019 unit rate contract for audio concrete construction in Milford, Michigan for the 2021 construction season. Be it further resolved that the mayor and city council hereby approve to extend the President Low Reed 2019 unit rate concrete contract for JV Cement Contracting Company of Brownstown, Michigan for the 2021 construction season. Be it further resolved that the mayor and city council hereby approve to extend the President Low Reed 2019 unit rate contract for Hutch Paving Company of Warren, Michigan for the 2021 construction season. So.
Move.
Support for discussion?
If I may, through the chair.
Okay, do we have, Carrie, did you get the mover and supporter?
I did, thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Breeding, go ahead.
I just, since Councilwoman Higgins is not here, I have to ask, and I know what the answer is going to be, but these three companies, I want to make sure that John Kazoo was pleased at their work, that there were no problems, and they finished the work as they were supposed to. He would ask it if he was here. That's all.
Mayor, John Kazoo, if I could, please respond.
Yes, go ahead.
All three of these contractors, this, the 2019 construction season, 2020 construction season, have been the best contractors that I've worked with in the city of Lincoln Park. I think that they've done an exceptional job. And I don't know if anybody knows, but I'm sure Mr. Kurzan and Mr. Hennessy could probably verify this. This past construction season was the best season that I recall not having citizen-issued problems out there. I thought they've done, they've done an exceptional job.
Very good, thank you.
Through the chair.
Yes, just, just a moment, I'll get right back to you. There were some, some issues, John, as we were going through this, on capital with the, as far as the restoration for the homeowner's front, front yard. They were eventually resolved, but I had to intervene with that. And when it came to.
Yeah, Mayor, I don't disagree. We did have issues, but the issues, I believe, have been significantly less than previous years. But you are right. There are always will be issues.
Well, with JV Cement, for instance, it seemed that when we allowed the, the rate to go through for the, in the last year, where we extended from 2019 to 2020, our contract appeared to be placed in the, in the, the back of the, back of the list. And the construction wasn't done in a timely fashion. And they were scrambling at the end of the year in order to get it done. I realize there were some items with, with COVID and such, but there were available times when they did not, did not do that. Now, are you saying that our, if this is going to be the case, that we will be a priority for next year and things will be done on a timely basis?
Mayor, I believe with the cash bin, there was a letter from JV Cement where they offered to the city that they would hold our 2019 low red unit rates for the 2021 season. And I believe in that same letter, they said that they would jump onto our work in the springtime and they would have everything completed by, I believe it was end of September of 2021, which would be approximately two months before the cold season arrived.
Because this year, they were into December still laying cement. Is that, that was correct, right?
Yes, sir. Correct.
All right, and one more thing before we go on to Councilwoman Ross. We have James and John from Tennessee Engineering. Are you happy with the work of these three companies and are recommending that these prices be extended?
Mayor, yes, this is Jim Oliver. Yes, I agree. We agree with the comments. We do have some issues early on with JV Cement where they didn't come in when we really wanted them to. And when John Kazoo and I met with JV Cement, we definitely pointed that out to them, that we needed a commitment that they would, they would make Lincoln Park a high priority if we, if we agreed to extend our contract or bring that work to the mayor and council. And they did, and they did commit it in writing for us. Hutch Paving, who worked on the asphalt, they did an outstanding job. I won't say, I believe they were pretty much, pretty much wrapped up with everything in July. And they also agreed that they would make the city of Lincoln Park a high priority. They'll do exactly this year what they did last year for us. They'll put us on the top of the list because now they know, if this does get approved, they know that this work will be forthcoming so they can already schedule it at this point before they start getting new work. And I believe all of that has conveyed the same promises to John Kazoo as well.
One more question from me. You have the 2019 rates. In reality, what type of savings are we looking at if we're utilizing, if we go ahead with this, as opposed to the 2030?
In the rate, there are about 5% to 6% savings there through there. It's been, inflation has gone up through that, you know, it's kind of tied to this CPI index through there.
So 5% to 6% of the total project would be how much? I'm not a math major there.
Being a funding range of 21. Just hold on real quick, please. With our 2000, mid part of '17, 2 million, 2.5 million is our estimate, so 5% be $15,000. $125,000. Mayor, for the water main under construction. Just in the roadway, about $125,000 we would expect to save.
So roughly, roughly $100,000 anyway?
Yeah, $100,000 through there, yeah. And this, just in the roadway, you know, we had the water main work, and obviously that goes up a little bit as well.
Okay, so with this, though, if council were to approve this, this tonight, I would say that for the 2022 would be something where we definitely would need to go out for. for, for bits for. I mean, we don't.
Yeah, I think, I think in this, you know, 21 program is a little bit of a carryover from 2020, to be honest as well, because we look to save a little bit of money because we work with sure what was going to happen with COVID.
Yes.
Through there, and so I think '22 is a natural great point to redid all these projects back, how I would read that.
Okay, and who was it? Was it Councilwoman Ross that, that wanted to be heard next?
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay, go ahead.
This is important as projects being finished on time. I'd like to know respectfully if the three companies finished within budget.
Yes, they did. We, we had the unit prices. The only thing that would change in the budget is the amount of water main work that was proposed. We have a lot more lead service leads than we did this year, so, but they held the prices. So, yeah, I think all of them did work within budget. They, all projects keep within budget, but we, but we did add a few service leads because we came across that, and they held their unit pricing for that and didn't request additional funding, an increase in unit costs or anything like that.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
It does, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, the further discussion? Okay, hearing none, then court call the roll.
Councilperson Ross? Yes. Tobin?
Marine, you're muted.
You're muted, Marine.
Yes.
Dupree?
Yes.
Salsito?
Yes.
And Mayor Karts?
Yes. Okay, then we move now to Citizen Communications, if anyone would like to address the mayor and council. James, if you could unmute. Anyone wish to address council? All right, hearing none, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So is.
All right, court call the roll.
Councilperson Salsito?
Yes.
Tobin?
Yes.
Breeding?
Yes.
Dupree?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
And Mayor Karts?
Yes. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
We got two.
John, James from Hennessy, John Kazoo for putting this together, and 6:52.